...is called to order location, Council Chambers. Call the roll.
Okay, Council Wheeler, Council Thomas.
Present.
Council Baker.
Present.
Young Cor.
Also would like to recognize the attendance of Councilman Nathaniel Martin and also Councilman Brandon King, who chose to sit in on the meeting. Legislation, please.
Resolution number eleven fifteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to transfer to Keisha Saunders Stewart, a parcel of vacant land held by the city as part of its land reutilization program and located at seventeen eighty-one Carlin Road, a vacant lot, East Cleveland, Ohio, four four one one two, permanent parcel number six seven two dash zero seven dash zero nine four, at a total cost of one hundred dollars pursuant to the city's land reutilization side lot program.
Right, is Ms. Stewart present here today? I don't see her in the audience. Councilors, if you can make note that the documentation referencing Resolution eleven dash fifteen. We'll open up for discussion if you guys want to have any discussion. Council Thomas.
Um, Mr. Chair, um, this individual had came before and was supposed to acquire two lots, but unfortunately there was some lack of communication, so she was referred to come back on a second time. Uh, this is a side lot, unbelievable, and there's nothing else.
Okay, I appreciate that. Let the record reflect that this resident has stayed in the city over eleven years and wishes to take part in the land reutilization program and has done the necessary paperwork to acquire such property. It is reflected on the agenda. I would like to refer Resolution eleven dash fifteen to the Agenda Review Committee. If my colleagues on the committee would affirm that they would like to see that action take place, I'm having no problem with referring it up.
I agree.
All right.
I have a question. I came in pack when I'm not on the committee.
I would love for you to figure this point out.
Is this property next, right next door to her property?
Yes, and if you look at the, uh, you look at the first preamble here, the preamble of her letter.
What page you're on?
I'm on the Department of Building and Housing, Meeting Minutes.
What page?
She stays at seventeen seventy-three.
Is this the one with the building up at the top?
She wants the property, so she's close to it, is at seventeen seventy-seven.
And this isn't a land bank?
Uh, this is also in the neighborhood, it was referred to the Neighborhood Advisory Committee for the land bank.
And they made a recommendation that she get it too for a hundred dollars?
Yes, if you go to the next page.
Where's the agenda?
Yeah. All right, you will see that they're recommending.
Page two.
Uh, after deliberation, I'm sorry, you stay on that page. I'll read before you. After deliberation, the request is granted a favorable recommendation from the NAC to the City of East Cleveland Community Development Department. Uh, was motioned by Hank Smith to recommend the sale of eighteen, uh, seventeen eighty-one Carlin Parcel, uh, six seventy-two dash zero seven dash zero nine four, uh, to the applicant under the East Cleveland ordinance twenty-four twelve, an amount of a hundred dollars. All members voted unanimously to pass the motion.
So she just wants it for a go? To just keep it clean, she does not go do any development on it, is it just?
Uh, future development plans are to erect a garage. All right, that's in the first statement in the, uh, in the letter, Councilman.
Okay.
All right, all right, we have a favorable recommendation to refer this to Agenda Review, Resolution eleven dash fifteen. Uh, next resolution, please.
Resolution number twelve fifteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to transfer to Ala Darrell Will at a cost of one thousand seven hundred dollars. A parcel of land held by the city as part of its land reutilization program and located at Zero Lakefront Avenue, East Cleveland, Ohio, four four one one two, permanent parcel number six seven two dash zero three dash zero eight one.
This is Ms. Darrell Will, Darrell Will, here at this point, I don't see her present.
Is that her name? Does that, does it look like it?
Darrell LaDawell.
Darrell LaDawell, okay.
She got Darrell LaDawell.
All right, and that's Resolution twelve dash fifteen, which, uh, my colleagues has also represented, uh, in the packet. Let the record reflect that, uh, Councilman Thomas Wheeler is in attendance to the meeting, also represented on the Contract and Property Committee. We have three voting members here and two guest councilmen. All right, we're on Resolution twelve dash fifteen, Councilman. Uh, Resolution eleven dash fifteen was referred to Agenda Review. Do you have any questions, Councilor?
Is this in your ward, Council President? Why is this so much higher at seventeen hundred than other ones was a hundred? May I say explain that to you?
It depends on the size and, uh, they, the, the, the property itself is, I believe, a parking lot. So that's a larger, uh...
This is a side lot.
Side lot.
The side lot of the other, the Nelder Lakes was a side lot. This is not a side lot.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. They wish to make it a parking lot, so I believe it's a double, it's a double lot.
So they're gonna do some economic development then, huh? It's, it's, it's right next to a store, I would assume.
That's next to the Eddie Road Food Mart? Uh, Councilman King?
This reads, used to be a retail store. You say it's in your ward, can you, can you take me, remind me what this is, so we, do you remember?
What it is, is that, um, here.
It's at the Lakefront, yeah?
Yeah, Lakefront is, um, right down on Eddie Road, it goes all the way straight through.
Oh, so it's, it's actually below that bridge then? I know where it's at now.
And what it is, is that, uh, she wants a parking lot and, um, yeah.
She, it's a he.
Something else she wants to deal with, but she doesn't have enough room to deal with it over there by that little food mart.
It's a he.
He, I'm sorry.
It's one of our Middle East, uh, it's one of our Middle East people.
Eddie Ro, Eddie Road Food Mart.
I got him the whole, he bought the whole area over there, right on the corner. He sits on the corner and he bought all that other land over there, and he's been developing that and making keep the lots and things clean that he has as of now. Sorry about his she, you never know.
I'm sorry, I sense fear.
So, Mr. Chairman, in addition, if I could, I'm looking at this document here. It says page four, it says, what is the name of the development project? And it says parking lot, and then it's got rent to the future, that's number one. And then you go down to number five, it says, identify the project construction manager and a general contractor, and it's got N A, it's got searching. And then on number eight, it says, provide evidence of your financial capacity owner of Eddie Road Food Market.
Well, he, he bought the other parcels over there, I think he still owns this one, but at the, at the onset, uh, once he cleaned up over there and put onings on that, um, food mark, he was supposed to, uh, do the whole lot, and it didn't happen at the time he bought. So he has the money and everything.
To do the lot?
He had to do everything he needed to do.
Well, something you'd heard of, that's pretty good, that's, that's the best we've done in a while.
But, but once it gets cleared off over there and right next to a, a home there, and, uh, that occupant doesn't mind that because he keeps his part clean, and she has to keep her part clean, so that he'll do it for her.
And I wanted my colleagues to be reminded that this is, uh, pretty much a almost neglected area, uh, development wise. Uh, in any small or gradual, you know, progress in that area, you know, it would be incumbent upon us to, uh, support, um, especially if it requires, you know, a business to stay in operation due to parking concerns. Uh, want to also let the record reflect that Director Jack Johnson has joined us, and he's also, uh, sitting in for the mayor, I believe.
No.
No? Okay, well, he's in here as finance director at this point.
And also, Mr. Chair, um, there is another, a little establishment that used, that has closed down at this point to your comment. If, if several businesses were in there, one was supposed to be a, um, a detailing area, a car wash and all that, we found out that that wasn't exactly what it was.
I think that's what they, they were doing something different in there.
They were doing something illegal, so I had to make sure that, um, it was drawn to the attention of our safety forces and make some, but the man still owns the, um, facility and I'm keeping an eye on it to make sure that there's nothing else here illegal.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, for Resolution twelve dash fifteen, I would like to pull my colleagues for, uh, uh, request to refer this to Agenda Review. Are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
All right, thank you, any other unreadiness? All right, Resolution, Council Clerk. Councilman King? All right, thank you, sir. Do we know what's on the, uh, do we know what's on? Uh, Resolution twelve dash fifteen be referred, uh, to Agenda Review. Thank you.
You got the thirteen fifteen over here. Shall I have a thirteen fifteen?
Yes. You have to read what these...
You mean thirteen fifteen?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution number thirteen fifteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to transfer to Jimmy L. Pope at a cost of five hundred dollars. A parcel of land held by the city as part of its land reutilization program and located at eighteen ninety-two Roseland Avenue, East Cleveland, Ohio, four four one one two, permanent parcel number six seven two dash sixteen dash zero two three.
All right, discussion on Resolution thirteen dash fifteen, Council Thomas?
Um, first of all, um, Mr. Jimmy Pope is a member of the NAC, and, um, it didn't specify, I read the minutes, and it did not specify who voted. It said three members voted. And, um...
Only three of them.
I talked to, I talked to the prosecutor slash law director, and, um, the idea was to, uh, put this out for bidding.
Okay. Uh, and also let the record reflect the, you know, is this a business address that's been used? Uh, I don't know the individual, the state of Roseland.
No, this, Mr. Pope is an individual resident.
Okay, yeah.
And he is saying...
Is this his court address?
He lives...
What's the address? Says eighteen ninety-six Roseland.
He lives on Montares.
Okay, Roseland, and it goes here.
Okay, I don't know what this Roseland is.
He actually lives on Forest Hill Boulevard.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Forest Hill Boulevard. And if you look up there in the middle of the block, uh, he has that whole area surrounded by, um, effects. And I guess he bought his adjacent property, uh, years ago. But then, I, I believe there is a conflict here.
Yes.
Um, him being the, and cannot exclude himself, uh, from the process in here.
Okay, yeah, it, it's no, uh, documentation, whereas, uh, Mr. Pope is not, is not shown within the, uh, minutes that he recused himself from the process. Uh, and furthermore, he is an active member, uh, on the committee, and at this point it would, uh, show some sort of discrepancy. Any other counsel?
Yeah, I just wanna, I'm perusing this document, and this may be minor, but I'm looking at Jimmy Pope on one document in here, and then I'm seeing James Pope on another one, so, uh, I think that, uh, same, yeah, but it's...
It's not consistent, it's not what you're saying.
It should be, is his name Jimmy James?
Should be his legal name of record.
It should be his legal name of record, and just like the Council President said, I know he's got at least three or four properties on Forest Hill Boulevard, uh, he's, and, uh, I don't see any, uh, anything in here where he voted on anything, I don't see, uh, I'm looking to see what the, in, the, in Neighborhood Advisory...
Recommendation.
Yeah, can you see it in here?
I don't.
Do, do you see it, Wheeler?
No.
Okay, I, I'm quite sure, he's, he's a smart guy, if he probably will be choose himself on voting on it, but I don't see any voting on, like we did on the other ones, I don't see any vote on it at all from the Neighborhood Advisory Committee, you got anything on that?
I think it's, it didn't say, it says in the minutes. Yes, it said, yeah, you have the minutes there, all it stated was three members voted. It didn't say which members voted for, that's all it says, was three members voted.
He might have been one of the three members that voted.
Right, right, that's too vague.
All right, uh, Councilors, uh, thank you for your feedback, and, uh, the, the process seems to not be, uh, all the way concrete and, and legitimate at this point in, in my perusing of the document, and I'm sure my colleagues agree with that. So for Resolution thirteen dash fifteen, I'd like to have that remain in, uh...
Committee.
Committee until it's, uh, received an opinion from the Law Department in thorough minutes, showing, showing the, uh, voting, uh, record on the date that they had their, uh, NAC committee meeting.
And, and, and also add to that, what is his real name? Is he Jimmy or James or, we're dealing with legal documents, we need his real name.
So let me give some direction to the clerk, because we sent a letter to the, uh, Law Department requesting an opinion for Resolution thirteen dash fifteen, and also, uh, communication to the NAC via the Mayor's Office, uh, regarding the accurate minutes reflecting, uh, Mr. James Pope, AKA Jimmy Pope, L. Pope's, uh, voting history on the date that they had the, uh, meeting, and also a consistent application that reflects his name, uh, legal name throughout the packet and not a shortened, uh, version of his name.
And also, and his, his address.
And his ad, uh, his residential address.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I did, um, let's put together and write, I did speak to, like I said, I did speak to the law director, prosecutor, uh, and she is in the process of doing, uh, us a, um, opinion stating, um, about competitive bidding, uh, on this area. But it's good to get the, everything you're writing, uh, from, for your, uh, committee.
All right, acknowledge that in the email as well, we are aware that she's working on a secondary project and that it should coincide with Resolution thirteen fifteen as well. Councilman King?
Thank you, Chair. If I'm reading this correctly, I think all we would need, and it's not my committee, but I'm just, I'm looking at the documents, if we, if this committee had something that just states that he did not vote on, I think that would...
That's exactly what I asked for.
I think that alone would suffice. May I remind you all that the state ethics has already ruled that just because you sit on a board, just because you're an elected official, you still have as any right to a property as anybody else, to any service that the city offers, any properties in the land bank, right? He couldn't have voted on it, as long as you followed the right policies and procedures, you have as any right as anyone else. I don't think we need to trouble the law director with writing that. We, we went through that a number of times. I think we just need the voting, and if I'm reading this correctly, and I think that I am, and if I'm picturing it correctly, if you go to this picture here, there's a house on the corner, which I believe Pope owns, and there's a vacant lot next to it that he's trying to get. So, that lot, that lot is, and I don't know how it even appraised so much, because it is just a vacant lot, from this picture, that's what it looks like, and then from the wording on here, that's how it reads.
Maybe the size and the, you know, corner lots have a different...
It's not the corner.
Well, there, there may be the size of that lot.
There's a house here.
The house is on the corner.
The house is here, and then this one's vacant, so...
He paid for his own appraisal, so that, that is what it came back to, all of them have to pay for the appraisal of property which they, they're trying to go, go forward. But what, the, the, the concern, uh, Councilman King, is that the application itself seems to be, uh, not, not forthright, okay? Uh, so if it's not forthright with us and we're the deciding body, uh, I would rather leave this where it is until I can determine, and my colleagues would, you know, with the help of my colleagues, determine, uh, the legitimacy behind this, uh, application. Um, furthermore, uh, with any request to see what somebody voted, you always still have to acquire, I would still acquire legal, uh, reference. I don't want to really call it an opinion, but I do want to call it a legal reference, uh, from the Law Department, saying that, that, that he followed all procedure, by backing himself out of it. The NAC cannot technically, uh, all they can do is refer minutes, but they can't technically tell me, uh, that he followed every bit of the process, uh, unless they, you know, they're swearing him under that title.
I, I understand your concern, but if you're asking the Law Department for a written opinion, you know, I, I don't want to say, it, it's not the best use of her time. It's gonna barely read the same as all the others, it's not gonna change. And we hear it all the time, how this city, in particular, the council, is notorious.
Notorious.
For slowing things down, holding things up. I think the minutes will suffice, because the, the opinion is still gonna read, he's entitled, as anyone else is, follow the policies and procedures.
The Law Department substantiates what happened.
Can I say something?
And then, and then, I'm coming to your comments, sir.
When the time for the comments comes, then you can do that. But let me say this, I don't have a problem with, uh, I really don't have a problem with what you're saying, I know why you're saying it, and it's based on something else, but I'm just gonna say this. I have, we have a lawyer that's supposed to work for us. And don't care what it is, there's, if you ask them to look over some papers or documents to make sure that everything is in order, there's nothing wrong with that. And this council, I don't know, can't speak about other councils, I'm not going back in this, but we have moved legislation and have not held up any legislation unless there was a, seemed to be a conflict of interest or, um, there was a, um, issue of ethics or whatever should take place. So, the Law Department, the Law Department and the Law Director slash, um, uh, Prosecutor is getting paid to do a job. And if the Chair asks for her to inspect this and everything turns out right, he goes right ahead, this is not, is it on emergency?
No.
It's not on emergency, so he can get his stuff.
Ma'am?
Yes, sir, Councilman Wheeler?
I, uh, as long as the minutes show that he recused himself from the voting and stepped aside from the process, what I'm saying, because he asked for a copy of the minutes.
No, he didn't.
Pressing on, you mean you saw the minutes, it wasn't in the minutes?
Yes, it did not...
And if, and if that's not, that's not the case, then it left me more clarity. But if, if clarity is in the minutes, then obviously hold it up.
I don't have that.
I don't have either, but there's no, he did not refuse himself. Like when we had a, um, issue with another individual, that individual excludes himself from the process and left the room.
Right.
This, there is nothing in this minutes that says that, I have...
Where's the copy of the minutes that I was seeing?
During the packing, for him.
Inspector, here? I went through it. Thirteen fifteen. I didn't see any minutes.
I didn't see any minutes either.
I didn't see any minutes.
That was looking to read.
I thought thirteen fifteen.
Here's your minutes, so...
Thank you.
Is it the bottom?
You see, I need to go right to, see, he was, he stayed in attendance and then...
Yeah, they're on the same page as the, uh...
He gave his own, and then right there, all it said. Three members voted unanimously. Right after your, right after your agenda.
Uh, paperwork.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I tried to keep you separate.
All right, so just for the record, uh, that I wanted to read the docket, fourteen dash two zero one four, representing Jimmy L. Pope regarding eighteen ninety-two Roseland, parcel number six seven two dash sixteen dash zero two three. The applicant is requesting to purchase a residential lot owned by the City of East Cleveland for yard expansion. Property owner, owner Jimmy L. Pope was in attendance to present his proposal. The applicant provided his presentation that he would like to acquire the lot for yard expansion. There is no future plans to build on the lot. Mr. Pope proposed to improve the lot with similarities displayed at, uh, one thirty-three zero four Forest Hill Avenue, uh, which is his residence. The applicant offered a record five hundred dollars, an appraised value for the lot, five hundred dollars. After deliberation, the request was granted a favorable recommendation from the NAC to the City of East Cleveland Community Development Director. It was motioned by Hank Smith to recommend the sale of eighteen ninety-two Roseland, uh, PPN, six seven two dash sixteen dash zero two three for the appraised value of five hundred dollars. Three members voted unanimously to pass the motion. Uh, then it goes on to the next docket. It doesn't say that he recused, it doesn't say that he's left the room, which it should, it should say as a sitting member, uh, of that particular committee. So we'll wait to the, uh, the benefit of the Law Department and telling us what our, our steps are or communication, uh, that reflects that he, uh...
Did not.
Sit in on that vote, all right? That is the end of the resolutions, uh, for the docket today. So Resolution number thirteen dash fifteen does remain in committee until such documentation is received to the Contracts and Property Committee and also CC the rest of the council, uh, so, Madam Clerk?
I think you need to also mention what probably the...
I did.
He gave...
I did. Yes, I did.
Like he lives here, can this individual, which he isn't?
Correct.
Which, uh, uh... Business being a landlord.
I, I recommend, I made that a point of record, that his address was not accurate.
You're talking about Mr. Pope?
Yes.
Well, see it for the record.
I did.
What is it again?
Uh, he has a Forest Hill address that was mentioned in the minutes.
Right, that's what I was telling Brandon, uh, if you look through the documents, he's got an address at eighteen ninety-six Roseland, and then if you look through the document, he's got addresses at one thirty-three oh four Forest Hill Boulevard, so he, he can't live for both of them, so...
Right, and we noted the, the inconsistencies of the application, and he would possibly have to, you know, reevaluate his submission.
Well, she, you said it's gonna remain in...
It is, so we, it has, it'll be fixed, it has to be fixed, uh, before it can be pulled out of committee. Councilman King?
I think if we, if we asked for, like the last packet had all of his parcels with the tax numbers, so we can see that he didn't owe any taxes, and I think that would suffice as opposed to verifying, um, addresses. Because obviously he owns all those properties.
Well, it has to be consistent with his residency and record. Um, that's, that's where I, I have a drawback, you know? Time and time again, East Cleveland has been hoodwinked by, uh, residents not occupying a certain property and wanting to land grab. And then we've also dealt with, uh, public servants who, uh, who claim one record and then lay another. Um, if, if that can be the case, then everybody across the United States can lay their head in New York and run for office there while sleeping in Cleveland. Or you lay my head in Cincinnati, where the other thirty-year-old councilman is, and I can run for, uh, council and, and, uh, uh, for College Hill, where I used to reside during college, and stay in East Cleveland. You know, it, it comes a point of transparency, and it, it comes a point where we have to decipher what's right and wrong. And at this point, you know, I would welcome people wanting to, you know, uh, purchase property and, and take care of it. And at this point, you know, I would welcome people wanting to, you know, uh, purchase property and, and, and take care of it. Uh, but I do not welcome the fact that some things come with, uh, unclarity and, and, and not consistency. So it, it does remain in committee, resolution thirteen fifteen, we'll move, uh, move to the remarks of the public, and you guys have all, uh, privileges, it's time to speak three minutes.